Waiting on Mr. Zuber.
He's out in the hallway whistling.
He's got that flag job.
Where'd you get that?
Right out there to your left.
You can see him by his...
Raro got his hat.
Well, hey, you said you could sit here.
Keep your line, Tom.
I know if I get hit in the back, it hits his front. Because I seen Nick man right over his stuff.
You bet.
She's right-handed, so I'm like, "You guys are right there."
Call meeting order. First item on the agenda, public comment.
Okay, I talked to Carl who's going this morning. This letter that I brought to you is that a gentleman came to our Stop Power Line Meeting with indistress, so I'll just read this to you. My name is Bill Mulvaney and I'm the superintendent of the School of Armstrong Township District 61. Also serve on the wind panel that meant to try to give direction to the county board on wind turbine ordinances. Our panel has not come up with any recommended changes, but I would like to share a few thoughts with you. I have noticed that we have some children in our district that appear to be having some medical issues related to the wind turbine. Headaches, lack of sleep, and jollies seem to be the most common. The student is also complaining about not being able to sleep or not getting a full night's sleep due to sound issues. We have also been advised that we are losing a couple of families because the wind turbines were placed so close to homes and the families can no longer handle the flicker and noise issue. While these issues were brought up at our panel discussions, I was not fully aware of the impact that the wind turbines would have on my school district. It is never a good thing when children have health issues or families have to leave their homes to get away from the turbines. The revenue generated with the turbines is a blessing to our school, but the unintended consequences are real. I hope this letter sheds some light on real issues that affect districts that house wind farms. I also hope that when the ordinances are discussed in the future, that these issues are considered. So this is right up the road in Armstrong School District. And I guess maybe I was aware that we had an ordinance, but I didn't know where it was at, how, when it's been updated, and so on. So this is hindsight. This is a real thing that's happened that has run people out of their homes and made people sick. So I just want you to have this hindsight. And I haven't reviewed this ordinance, and you probably haven't either recently, so I'd just give you something to consider. Thanks.
My understanding that there's legislation going through right now that takes, supersedes if it passes, any ordinances of counties or the state's taking over. Rather than this ordinance, the state, I don't know if that passed or not, but hopefully that will get squashed, and I hope you guys would send a letter to the legislature telling them you don't want to do that.
Did you have a comment, Tom?
No.
Oh, I thought you started to say something.
I was going to ask Jack if he...
Do you have something?
No, I don't have it.
Oh, you got a minute? Okay, thank you. I don't know if this is the proper time. I saw you last month down at County Courthouse, and I've got a... I asked you to somebody if you would take time to do some research about whether we could do any variances or setbacks from how far a house could be from a high tension or high voltage transmission line. So I got a copy for everybody on the board, one of these. I let you bruise some of this stuff. I'll have yours in a second. I didn't really need a seven. The first page has got a... You can get hundreds of these, but there's hundreds of web pages. The first has got a list of different web pages that you can look up some information on high voltage transmission lines. The second page I've copied some fact sheets on is your safe distances from power lines. And you can do your own research. I know there's always going to be debatable things on this stuff, pro and con. What I would like to show you very quickly in my few minutes here is page three. The British Journal above that says, "The studies show living next to power line decreases risk of cancer," because of EMFs and the amount of voltage in the magnetic field. You can find out and research whether or not this is correct or not. I assume it is. From the British Medical Journal, June of 2005, researchers found that children living within 650 feet of power lines, that's, you know, about the high voltage ones, had a 70% greater risk for leukemia than children living 2,000 feet away or more. Epidemiology Journal has agreed that several studies have identified occupational exposure to extremely low frequency electromagnetic fields as a potential risk factor for neurodegenerative diseases, etc., etc. Then talks about miscarriage risk on the next one. On the next page, the Internal Medicine Journal, 2007, they did a study of 850 lymphoma, leukemia, and conditions from two universities in Britain. They concluded that people who live within 328 yards of a power line up to age five were five times more likely to develop cancer as an adult. People living 328 yards of a power line at any point up to age 15 years were three times more likely to develop cancer as an adult. And then we have more things here that were mentioned. 30% of all child cancers come from exposure to high voltage power lines, and so forth and so on. And they're just a plethora of information you can access, pro and con, because on the last page, I gave you a Realtor's page in which he quotes California. You know, they do a study, and they say, "It don't hurt anybody, don't bother anybody." But the Realtor, as he's advising other Realtors, makes it very plain that all their property values end up dropping, especially houses, when they put them by a high voltage power line. On the back page, I have underlined and darkened some information from this Realtor from California. The biggest disadvantage of owning a home near these high voltage transmission lines is the fear factor associated with EMS, and because that, it decreases the value of the homes. And then he said, at the bottom, based on the California study, which said it was fine, he said, "It's like saying, 'I never tossed a positive for steroids,' and unfortunately, athletes don't claim they didn't take steroids. I wish the EMF study should have been a definite measurable conclusion, that way customers or consumers can make a decision based on facts and not concrete." And here's what this Realtor in California said at the end. "Never make statements about the property that lead a buyer to conclude that the transmission lines are safe. Don't increase your liability by thinking your liability as a Realtor by thinking that since you have any problems, the new buyer won't." My contention for you now only is there's a health issue about if we don't have a certain amount of distance between the houses and these high voltage lines that we set up as a people and as a county. It's also going to affect our property values, which is going to affect your tax base. I already talked to this months ago to the superintendent at Crestwood, and ultimately, it will affect everybody's tax base in this county, because my home or my house, my value's going to go down if this goes through. I won't be able to turn it over and sell it like I want to sell it someday for the price it's at. I think these are all things you have to consider, if you can consider this, about setting some kind of variance, saying, "Okay, this many feet, whether it's, if we do more research and find out it's 2,000 feet, or 3,000 feet, or 1,500 feet, but some reasonable, safe distance away from my home." And, you know, then deal with the other issues as they go along, but if you do that, I think it would help us in the county. That's my concern. I bring it back to you. I was told, both the townships, I think I should come to county board and let you gentlemen deal with it, and then see where we go from there. Okay? Appreciate it. Jack Hocken, by the way.
You're requesting some type of county-wide resolution?
Yes.
Setback from power lines?
From a certain voltage, not just a regular power line, but a certain high voltage. You'd have to come up with the amount of voltage, where right now they're going 345. But that doesn't mean they won't double them too down the road on those lines, because we've seen it all over America, anybody's traveled. So, yeah, some kind of a, say, okay, you know, like if this study's correct, for instance, that I quoted to you out of here, where you have a rise in leukemia in the one study of children living less than 2,000 feet. Okay, so that would be not quite half a mile. So if you had a half a mile variance, 2,000 feet variance, you know, it'd make it more difficult for the line to go through, but it could still go through the county. If it went through the right area, it wouldn't be in top people's homes.
Are you... You've done the research, Jack, and you probably have too, Tom. You're saying that we have the authority to enact an ordinance?
I don't know. You should know that. I think you do, or I think the county has the right to vote on it then. Because other counties that let power lines do what they want to do doesn't mean you don't have the right, or we don't have the right to say, "This is what we think." You set up, I'm sure you would set up variances and ordinances for other things. Am I right or wrong? For houses and on the road commissions and all that kind of stuff.
Trailer, you know, double or single-way mobile home.
Yeah, but so why can't you say, "We need to have these at least this far away"? Now, the condition he brought up about the wind generators, that what really upset the people up there was that they couldn't get them far enough away from the wind generators because they thought 1,000 feet was far enough, but they found out it was affecting people when it's 1,500 or 2,000 feet away. Well, these electric lines are even more potent because they're actually releasing the charges in the air, and so I just would like to have you consider and see if it's possible. Why say it's not possible when it could be? Okay?
We could ask State to terms.
That's right. And then they may want to push it too, but then they gotta say, "Well, no, you gave them the permission to go through your county, but not within 2,000 feet of anybody's home."
If we had a choice...
Or whatever it was.
If we had a choice, we wouldn't give them permission to go through your county.
I agree with you completely.
And we don't have that choice.
I understand that, and I'm telling you that as a landowner, they're going to end up taking my property before I give it to them or sell it. This is going to be as simple as that. I already made my line up. I'm going to chain myself to trees that are left, and that'll be it. But, and it's not because I'm against electricity, you guys understand that, we've been telling people this. It's because of the way they're doing it and the unsafe practices. I got little children, I got grandchildren. The next people moving my house, well, may want, may have kids, might be in my kids. People right down the road have children, and they're very concerned about that line being put a couple hundred feet away from their house, and it's going to go, and my issue, and I know this is selfish, but mine's going to go a couple hundred feet in one side, turn and go a couple hundred feet in front of the other side. They don't care. So if we could just say, "Hey, gotta have this many feet, there are places it can go through," and then deal with the other issues after that, but save the human life for sure. So I'm appealing to you to research it, see if it's a possibility, and, you know, present it, and then go from that, and then let them be the ones that, let them be the ones that push you to say, "Hey, we gotta have that land." Why? You don't have to have it here, you can have it over here if you go through the private channels, but you can't have it over somebody's sandbox.
What did you say the voltage was, or you said 345?
Well, it's 345,000 volts is the one they're putting through, they want to put through right now. And of course, they held up, right now, right now, we're held in court temporarily, they got eight cases against us. So we don't know how this is going to turn out, it's over, but...
They combined all those...
Yeah, all the lawsuits that they combined.
So they're selling one?
There's one, there's one case in the appellate court, probably held in October.
By their own admission, they will not put these lines by schools, and what was it, Tom?
Hospitals.
Hospitals and nursing homes, but they'll put them over my house. Well, I'm about ready for nursing homes.
They originally told us not to farm, but they had to say offset 700 feet from any building. That was the first meeting.
Well, that can't be true, because they're going closer now.
There is no federal setback.
Well, that's what the PR guy said. Oh, where it'd be 700 feet.
Yeah, they've told us everything.
Yeah, they said it wasn't coming out of county either.
They told us everything. When you talk, you try to talk to your salespeople. We never talked to Amherst. The only talk that, when we did, was people came out and they don't, they, you know how it goes, we tell you. But I think if you as a county board say, "Okay, let's approach this, let's put it down, and we're telling you, we know we can't stop them," maybe, like you just talked about the state, we may not be able to stop it, but we can determine. And you could do the same thing like you've done in the past with porno shops or whatever else. You say, "Okay, we don't want them over within a certain amount of distance of a school or whatever." Same basic principle, except here it's our health. Okay? Thank you so much for your time, Jack.
Another question.
Check on you again.
Another question.
Yes, sir.
Those two power lines over just across the state line, do you have any idea how much voltage those are?
Tom can address it, because we had a guy come and talk. Would you want to talk about that, Tom?
Yeah, those are 360,000 volts. Those are Duke Energy power lines. And in the state of Indiana, Duke Energy gets an eminent domain when they apply for their Order of Convenience and Necessity, whereas Amherst doesn't ask for eminent domain until after the fact. Indiana's done a little different than what Illinois is. In Indiana, they have to pay a fee on every pole they set. In Illinois, there's no fee for a pole in Illinois. I mean, it's just a difference in the way the states do things, okay?
We had an individual come that talked about that, about his cattle breeding business and how it turned into a cow's sterns.
Him and Zell was, but Chris White, or wherever.
Yeah, he's under that line that Duke Energy...
Well, no, just last week, I was driving through the country south of Sanford, going to Terre Haute, and I was looking at the power line to see how close they were to houses, and down there, a couple miles south, there was, right beside their yard was the pole. It's probably the lines were 50 feet from this house.
Right.
And I thought, wow.
Yeah.
But I didn't know how powerful they were, but I'd see that was put up in like 1970.
Right.
And a lot of the information wasn't known back then, too.
I wouldn't make more comment. Since the Illinois Commerce Commission has granted an approval of this line, the total line across the state of Illinois, I'm not sure you can go retroactive and pass an ordinance to stop them from putting it like you were getting at. I think it's too late for an ordinance on this project, but you might be able to get an ordinance to stop the next one from kind of real close to the houses.
And if this one doesn't go through where they want it to go through?
Yeah, then there'd be a chance.
You'd be proactive as to what might be going?
I don't think the county can buck the state on the Illinois Commerce Commission giving approval to the body, so.
Any other public comments? I don't want to wait on the state to make a ruling on this. I think the county can address the wind farm because the upgrade to the substation in Kansas is basically to enhance their ability to build wind farms and handle the wind farm electric traffic. That's the main reason for that being built, which is going to make them look for places to build wind farms, and we don't want one.
If I might clear up one other issue. The transmission line is a whole different can of worms from a wind farm.
Sure.
A wind farm cannot get eminent domain, all right? Whereas a transmission line can get eminent domain authority. Wind farm is a whole different, whole different set of rules than what Amherst's transmission line is.
We may be seen as just speaking about ourselves, but it is affecting only us.
Right.
If they move that, to Chrisman, to Elbridge, to wherever it moves, everyone is going to be concerned about it.
Right.
It doesn't just affect the people that are here. We have 200 people at our meeting, maybe the most, but it affects the 23,000 that live in the county.
Well, this is just one of them. There's 10 more proposed in the next five years across the state.
When we adopted this ordinance for wind farms, we had public meetings, and we had no opposition. So I would ask that you guys look over this and tell us where we need to change it for us to look at.
We'll be glad to.
Thank you.
Since you mentioned it, I would like to ask that the board formulate a memorandum to send to the state legislature and tell them you're opposed to the Agriculture Department or anybody in the state taking your zoning rights away from you, which is what that piece of legislation is trying to do. It's trying to set, to set back the standard throughout the state, and it's not going to be good enough, because turbine manufacturers and companies are going to donate a lot of money to, you know, their people that didn't want to get into office, and then they'll pass something like 1,200 feet. It'll never be good enough, and once the state gets a hold of it, you'll never be able to change it.
Wouldn't hurt for individuals to speak to their legislators.
He called my number. I don't think the issue so much are legislators, though. That's the issue.
You're right, you're right about that.
You're right. I mean, we have...
We have legislators that listen, and we're very fortunate, but unfortunately, it's not our legislators that matter.
The ones up in Chicago that don't have turbines and power lines are the ones trying to get those back. Any other public comment? I just, I'll take this with me, because I still have a copy. But this is a picture of the house that the gentleman kind of spoke to, had to move out. You can see it's not a rundown shack. He just actually had rebuilt most of this before they turned the wind farm on, and he only got to live in it about three months before they started wind farming, and he had to move out. So I sure appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Albert Cogan, a great county resident. Once again, I'd like to visit you folks about your airport grant. Seems like every time I come before this board, I mention that the airport grant is full of a lot of flaws, full of fraud. We all seem to agree on that. Last meeting, even Jeff White indicated that he tried to make these changes. He tried to eliminate the lies. He said he was wanting to do that.
That's not what I said. I didn't use the term lies or anything close to that.
What term did you use?
There were things that were no longer accurate in it.
Were they accurate to start with?
I'm not, I'm just saying, don't characterize me as talking about lies.
Well, you don't interrupt me, start a dialogue, I'll talk to you. Point is, gentlemen, that when Chris Patrick was on the airport advisory board, he concocted a plan with Jimmy Wells, who submitted the plan to the Division of Aeronautics for our airport improvements. That's a federal document. The lies on that document, and there are many, did not have 35 airplanes at the airport when that was filed. You weren't selling 5,500 gallons average per month at the airport when that was filed. You had a 10,000 gallon jetty fuel tank, which was what you were asking for in that grant. You failed to mention that, what you said, you only had a 1,000 gallon tank. In the last few meetings, I brought this, your attention, that I had FOIA, I have four years' worth of fuel receipts from the airport, and I had two years' worth of delivery tickets from the airport signed by airport manager. So it isn't like he didn't know that he was ordering 7,000 gallons of fuel, and he was stuffing it in his 1,000 gallon fuel tank. Everybody knew those were lies. They were inaccuracies, they're outright lies with the intent of gaining federal dollars for a few contractors in the community. And I furthered my theory by saying that for the seven or eight months that my son was at the airport prior to his death, we came to these county board meetings over and over and over and said, "Hey, Mr. Airport Manager is way out of control. He's doing things he shouldn't, he's doing things that are wrong, doing things that are illegal. We're not going to take you to court, we're trying to work with you," and nothing happened. My conclusion is, you didn't want to do anything to Mr. Wells because he was furthering the federal grant application, he was supporting it through Division of Aeronautics. I mean, an ordinary employee of a county would look at the facts and say, "Gosh, Mr. Division of Aeronautics, this whole thing is full of lies, lies I've already proven to everybody on this board." So that's why you protected Jimmy. Now, I would talk about conspiracy for a moment, because conspiracy is about people going together and agreeing not to tell the truth. In this case, first conspiracy kind of covered that with the grant. Everybody on the airport advisory board, every committee member on the airport knew, and every board member has known for at least six months, if not from the very beginning, that grant application is nothing but created lies for people's benefit. The second thing I mentioned was that this protected Mr. Wells' job. How can you come to board meeting after board meeting after board meeting? Not one person, not two people, not five people, but 10 or more people talked about his behavior. Nobody did anything. People promised to do something, but they didn't do anything. Since I'm going to be hilled to a time constraint where others haven't, I'll jump to the end row here, if you will. I'm talking about conspiracies that things you people shouldn't be involved with. You're elected to tell the truth and be honest people. That's all I'm asking you to do. Need to go back to the Division of Aeronautics and straighten that mess out. When you talk about conspiracies, there's another one that comes to mind. This is on the reward poster. There's two of them, you're welcome to them. On the side of the plane that was burned is, "This is our airport." Now, that would be a conspiracy between somebody here locally and more than one person. That happened at the airport, like the grant thing happened at the airport, like the crash that happened at the airport, and all the conspiracy that happened at the airport, and it all involves the people that you guys are protecting. I'm asking you to do the right thing before the federal government comes in and cleans house. I told you in the last meeting, there are two federal agencies investigating this. Nobody asked me after the meeting who those were, so I guess you're not worried about it. But I want you guys to just quit lying to the public. It's a simple thing. If Jeff is correct, if Jeff is correct, if the Division of Aeronautics, it doesn't make any difference, then why haven't you guys stepped up to the plate and wrote the letter to Division of Aeronautics and said, "Hey, this is a fraudulent grant," or we made, what was the word you used?
Jeff, time's up. I'll give you an extra minute.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I just have one thing, if I can sit while I'm saying this to you. I've been to several meetings, and I've missed you, because I've had both my legs cut off and replaced, I guess, what it feels like having it anyway. But the thing that bothers me, and I said, "I've been on a lot of boards at different times," these things are brought up by the public, including things I say, and I, if I was president or anybody on the board, I'd write that down and discuss it at the next study session, and say something about it at the next meeting. I have never heard the board say anything about anybody's public opinions. Now, maybe sometime when I'm not there, or maybe you have, but I have never heard at the next meeting, I mean, what I brought up, what I brought up, what other people brought... Now, these things here are different, what these people are talking about, but the airport business has, to me, has been miserable. You know, there's not a lot of things I've been upset about. I'm upset about this grant, but I think it's totally unnecessary, and that's the way our whole country operates, so maybe that's the thing to do, spend the money foolishly, because they're all doing it, and so we might as well do it here, I guess. But that's just my big problem, is that I wish that the board would come back with some kind of an opinion on some of this. You kind of get it when you're here, a little bit, but not too much. That's just my thoughts on it. I just wish the board, maybe you do discuss it, because you never say anything about it at board meetings. I never hear nothing about anything that's brought up. You know, I hope that these gentlemen with the wind turbine and stuff, that affects the public and the airports not that much, as far as that goes with the public, because I'd say two-thirds of the people in Andrew County care less about the airports. There's a lot of people don't own airplanes and stuff, but, okay, that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Item three, presentation on GIS pricing by Ben Ross.
Ross is not here.
You're on the room.
We currently charge $2,500 for the county shape files, and I called some other counties to see what they charged. Ross and I kind of discussed that we thought the fee should be higher, and we're getting a lot of requests, not for the entire county, but certain areas, and I thought if we could establish a fee that was per parcel also, so that we would know, you know, if somebody requested, you know, 100 parcels, it'd be different than requesting for the whole county. So we had an idea of what to charge, and it's still the same, it's $2,500 for the whole county and not having a $2,000 for per parcel. Right now, our per parcel fee, if you divide the 2,500, would be 14 cents a parcel. And the paper I gave, Effingham charges 25 cents per parcel. Paswell charges 3,000 for the entire county. DuPage charges 300 for the entire county. Boons, I didn't quite understand it. They said per feature, 10 polygons would be 50 cents each, so that would be $5. I don't know their terminology of polygon, what that means in terms of the shape file. And McHenry and Adams County don't charge anything, so I just thought that was something you can look at.
What's a shape file?
What's a shape file?
It's everything inside the county, all the layers and all the information.
That type of business one, that easy.
If anybody, yeah. So.
What's your recommendation?
I had thought twenty-five cents a parcel like Effingham, but.
What's a parcel?
Be like one piece of property that you own. You might have ten, but if you wanted that particular one. And usually when we've been getting requests, they're wanting certain things or certain areas, and we need more definition what to charge, if they don't want the entire.
This, there, this cost of course, does that get all the layers that we currently have on our GIS system?
If they want all of them, yeah.
I mean, so it's, they're getting everything.
Things like the Crispin fire hydrants, they might not want that, or what the school districts are.
But if they did for whatever it is for parcel, everything should have come up for that fourteen cents.
What do you get when you request that? I guess I'm not sure what.
If Ross was here, he could probably tell you about it. They get, they get all the information, I guess, so they could print a map or look at any detail they wanted.
Well, say they did want the Crispin fire hydrants. What would that cost?
I'd write off, I don't know. I don't know how many parcels.
Well, it's my idea, and for a parcel, I would guess.
Yeah, it hasn't come before the committee or anything. Did you want it to, what do you want to do? I didn't know about this, so.
I mean, it's something that you can just set and think of, it's not something that has to be acted on immediately, but we get fifteen cents a parcel for a property record card. And we're only charging fourteen for GIS, and basically, they get most of the information that's on the parcel record card in addition to the maps, so.
Yeah, I would think, come in, work on that and give us the record.
Do you know this, would like, so like Crawford, Clark, Cumberland, Coles, Berman, some of our neighbor neighbors, do we have any idea from them, is there a way we could find that information?
I don't have it on here, but Coles charges three cents per parcel. Some of the others that I tried to get a hold of, the GIS was out, or it was, leave a message on the machine, which didn't go good, so.
And we right now charge what?
Twenty-five hundred for the entire county.
Which figures out to about fourteen.
Fourteen cents a parcel.
Any other questions?
What's the, how long do I have to print out a parcel? Just print off the computers, I want to do, or?
What we do is we electronically send the files to them, so that they can manipulate how they want to get information.
So really, it's not very time consuming to do that?
No, but we've spent a lot of money to get, yeah, with the technology.
I need to review our technology costs.
Any other questions? Thank you. Committee reports. Are we going to start with nine-one-one? Troy, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I mean, I was hoping that we could discuss some of those things in executive session, but maybe we don't need to. Today, we just came back because we wanted to see if there was any discussion about what we presented a couple of months ago with the reorganization of the nine-one-one, and what we'd like to do. You know, I believe that there's no sense to beating a dead horse in the mouth. It's going to be better for the community, for all the users of the nine-one-one. It's going to save taxpayers dollars. It's going to be better for the county board. It's going to improve the quality of our service. So I think it's a no-brainer that we move forward with it. You know, I didn't know if there was any questions or concerns that county board might have with the plan to move forward with it. But I think that we need to move forward with it, and I really do, and we don't want to hold this up. And we will move forward with it if we can. Yes, sir.
I'm just asking, but I wonder if it would be simpler to stay in the front of it. Why do you want to go to the back of it?
There were some concerns that's been brought up. There was some safety concerns, some security concerns with being in front of the building, and the distractions from our nine-one-one dispatchers of, like we talked about before, they're the ones that answer the window when a visitor comes in to sign a log to visit an inmate in jail. We have a nine-one-one call come in, you know, we're needing an ambulance or a fire truck. We really don't need the distractions of a dispatcher signing in a person to visit Johnny in the jail or to deliver underwear or stuff. So, but there are also certain things that even might reorganize and moving it to the back that we can still control and help the sheriff out.
And what's that, just left them?
No, that's all right. There's just a couple of things, but there were some, there's some other things that we can do. Mr. English said it'll help the Sheriff's Department out by, that is, controlling the locks. You know, like if they want passages through with monitor cameras. And we can still do that and help the sheriff with that. We went and took a tour of Clark County's nine-one-one system, and they actually have a set aside building. They're not even in the jail or connected to the jail. They have nothing to do with the jail. Now, I think we have the perfect opportunity that we can combine some of those valuable assets, which is our people, to help work together with the Sheriff's Department and minimize some of our headcount to where we can provide those services for the sheriff department. However, we wouldn't be providing necessarily the, like I said, checking in visitors. That would be something correctional officers probably would have to do, or the sheriff would work out between his personnel. Yes, sir.
So we'd have to hire separate people to run, you know, like you're saying, if somebody comes to see a prisoner, we'd, the county'd have to have a separate person, the nine-one-one dispatchers will not be doing that. Is that correct?
I'm not for sure how the sheriff would want to handle that, you know, I mean, but obviously, I think that the sheriff would want to put together a plan on how, I know what I would do if I was sheriff, but I can't speak on behalf of Mr. Motley, who's not here today, or, and I think that was some of his concerns from our last meeting. If I, if, you know, my memory serves me right, he wants to keep all those positions. Of course we do. You know, we all, we all want the headcount, right? But he had some concerns with correctional officers. But I believe, now, this is my own personal opinion. I believe with the savings that we could see by doing a couple of different things, one that we brought up with, with some of the benefits, some things that we brought up with, what nine-one-one will be able to budget and invest into it legally by combined statute. That would be a savings to the county that could possibly create enough money, free up enough money for a couple of positions at that scale of, you know, maybe thirteen, fourteen bucks an hour to do that. But that would be up to the sheriff. It'd be up to the county. It'd be up to, you know, create those headcounts. Now, this is just some of the things that we've been looking into, you know, and, and again, you know, it'd be up to the sheriff to do that. Now, me, a correctional officer's responsibility would be to secure the prisoners in the jail, but everything within that jail would be the correctional officer's responsibilities and what they're trained to do at their academy.
And there's some kind of a bill that may pass where they can put a tax on cell phones and that in the works?
Yes.
Read something about it, didn't quite understand. Didn't pay much attention to it.
No, they've already got one. They've already got it.
They're trying to get it. They're trying to get it raised.
They're trying to get it increased, sir, because what we're finding now is, yeah. But then, that's been very proactive in that with our legislators, myself. I've been, some contact with our legislators to investigate revenue sources for the nine-one-one board. But again, they have our hands tied so tight with what we can do with that money legally. There's only certain things that we can do, but we want to be able to provide as much financial support as possible to our county to offset taxpayers' liability in birds. That's what we want to do without.
Frankly so, but they want to know exactly what the money's being used.
Yes, and I think it's good what they're used for because it's a fee, right? But it's not a tax, it's a fee. But.
What you're asking us, we are moving on. We're checking on the retirement benefits and things, and all that takes time. And they are investigating all the options that you give us. We just haven't come up with any definite answer yet. But it's not sitting still.
I understand that, sir.
Just probably moving as fast as you want, and.
Well, I just, no, it's not, I mean, it has personally, really, nothing to affect me. I mean, I don't, I hope, you know, we can do something different, but I think as a county board, though, we need to investigate it to get that savings now, you know, as soon as we can. That's, I mean, financially. But, I mean, I hate to say, I hate to be, you know, messenger on that, but it just makes sense to do it. But who, if you don't mind me asking, who's the finance committee and who's the sheriff's committee on the, on the board?
I'm on the sheriff's committee. There's three of us, but I don't know.
Sheriff's committee is Dan and Carl and Jeff, and the finance committee is.
Me, Carl, Joe, Zuber, and I.
Okay, so you do have that communication between both committees, and that's my understanding. It's up to those two committees, and I appreciate that. But don't think for a second that, I mean, that's not, well, we're here to do that. That's just one of the things that we presented for the cost savings.
Right.
Like I said, you look at fifteen percent, look at fifty-five thousand dollars. What's a twelve, twelve dollar an hour employee make a year?
Well, one of the things you need to point out too, Troy, this invitation's not twenty-four seven, sixty-five. And he does, the sheriff does have a full-time employee that works eight hours a day, five days a week, sets right up there at the front. So it's not like we're going to have to hire a whole new crew to run, or not us, but the sheriff have to hire a whole new set of people just to answer the phone or answer the front door.
And currently, we provide a twenty-four hour open door policy at the Sheriff's Department, which is kind of nice to have. But that doesn't mean by law that we have to do that. You know, the sheriff's office does not have to be open. The front door doesn't. Now, the back door needs to because criminals don't sleep, right? We're bringing them in the back, but the front door doesn't necessarily have to be occupied twenty-four hours a day. Now, would it be nice, well, the good thing is, we have technology for that. Somebody has an emergency or comes in, or, you know, now we have a safe drop zone, I think, Sheriff's Department for babies and stuff like that, that we would monitor that electronically with, you know, cameras, and we can send that person whoever needs, whatever service they need. We can support that from the dispatcher side and say, we need a firefighter, a cop, or a correctional officer up at the window. I mean, it's still something that we could support without adding headcount. But I just wanted, you know, like I said, I want to provide the opportunity for communications. We have a meeting tonight, or this afternoon at four-thirty at the courthouse, right? And they're going to want to know where we're at on this progress, and I appreciate everybody's time. Hopefully, we'll have some visitors, and I welcome you all to come to the nine-one-one meeting to ask questions or to, but to help us make sure we're going in the right direction. But I think we have a pretty good hold on where we need to go and what we like to do. And I think there were some concerns about the lease and the Sheriff's Department in that back building. And if there's any questions concerning that, does anybody have any question concerning the lease? Or why that building was built or back in the past, and why we would like to do this reorg back there again?
I think there's some questions about, you know, the working together. But the working together between the Sheriff's Department and nine-one-one.
Well. We'll put it out there, and obviously, I'm not afraid to speak. Will the conditions get better if we change shares? Absolutely. They will. But it's not our mission. Our mission is to reorg this, so we never have to put up with that non-working relationships again, regardless of who's sheriff, if I'm sheriff, if Carl's sheriff, if Mike's sheriff. If, but the quality of it goes to, if something happens, the responsibility for those dispatchers currently, they're contractual employees, they report to the sheriff. If something happens that a dispatcher screws up a call, like it's happened several times in the last six months, I know, or that is very rude to the people, the quality comes back to the director. In order to control the quality and the dispatchers, as well as the accountability, we have to have them directly report to the director. There's no questions about it. That's the way that it really needs to be. Now, going, like you said, going back to working together, absolutely, we'll do that. We'll still work together with the sheriff because the sheriff has a keen interest on who we're hiring. And I think that the hiring committee should be a board. We haven't got that far with the legal HR stuff. It should be a board composed of a member of the Sheriff's Department, if not the sheriff, the director, and maybe one other person at large for the hiring committee, so we can all agree, so we can all be part of the.
And it's not that way now. We have zero say so. Zero.
We don't know who's being hired. We don't know, we can't control that. But we pay for their training, and we're responsible for the quality of the calls or the quality of service that's provided, and I don't believe that that's fair or right.
So are you implying, and I don't remember the resolution, are you talking about maybe modifying the resolution a little bit? Because doesn't that say in the resolution that the sheriffs shall have direct supervision? Is that something we need to work on?
When we get to that point, yes, Mr. Voight, we'll need to, need to modify that resolution with that for that person.
That's sort of a resolution.
Yeah, that release agreement is what you're talking about, Jeff, right?
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought about, do you have a question? That's fine. The other thing that I've heard some concerns from my fellow board members is that, and I understand that we've got to, I think the term was walk before we run. But by the sheer definition of your saying, the way you define it to us, we still, I don't think, don't understand, even though we understand the dynamics of personnel that may be not exactly on board with this right now. But, you know, we have to face that situation anyway. Why are we not including the city? And I think some of us at least want to think about that. Why is the city not being included when there are more economies and efficiencies for the whole county, including the city? I think we need to explain that to the taxpayers, why we're not, even though we might have a department head against it. I mean, what's best for the people is what we should be considering.
Well, yes, sir, and I agree. I mean, I do agree, but like you said, walk before you run. But what happens when you get to running, you got a big belly like this? You stumble, right? We don't want to stumble, and that's the thing. When we fall flat on our face, we have people's lives at risk. And that's where, you know, we don't want to get that big to where we're including that. Now, as a county board, absolutely, you want to be responsible for all the taxpayers, right? But as we've seen down in Clark County and other counties, if we want to take over that, we can charge that. We could go out and we could charge Hugh Fire Department, Kansas Fire Department, for the service that we're providing and dispatching. We can do that.
No, you can't. Sorry.
Are you sure?
Positive.
All right, so maybe they're doing things illegal, but we can figure out what Clark County is doing, that they're receiving those funds for that, okay? But if the city wants to come involved, you know, and I agree with you, is it crazy that we have a twenty-four hour Sheriff's Department dispatch and two blocks away, we have a twenty-four hour Paris dispatch with multiple employees? Absolutely, it's crazy. But I think that we need to do what's best for the county. Again, like you said, the taxpayers, the only place that the taxpayers come in on this whole nine-one-one is the benefits that we provide our dispatchers, that you're currently working on.
Users might be a better term.
Yes, users.
This is a unique opportunity to find out whether there's enough, whether there's problems. I think we need to set aside, like you said, personal feelings and take care of the users, give them a good service, make sure the taxpayers have some economies. There's a unique opportunity to combine all this stuff. And I think you're missing the boat a little bit on not doing that at this point.
Well, you know.
Personally.
Yeah, and I agree with you, but you know, there's probably been discussions about, and I'm just, it's philosophical, I guess, but the school system down here, right? They're building this big school. I've listened about this stuff, about EMS and power lines and stuff. I went down and looked where that new school was built. You know how far the railroad tracks are? Where was the last time that they had a derailment? Where'd it happen? And what does a railroad carry? Chlorine gas, sulfuric acid? That's a bigger risk than a power line. But anyway, not to be the dead horse, but, so, but they build a school, right? And they're building it thinking that they will come when they fail, right? Now, as, like I said, our responsibility, at least with the chairman of the nine-one-one board, is the nine-one-one dispatching. The sheriff, or the city's dispatching and the dispatching for the Sheriff's Department is something totally separate. So we're just trying to concentrate on what our responsibility is. Now, including others. Now, including others and being inclusive for those services, have no problem with that. And not, not to just build a blockade and say, no, we're not gonna do it, but I think that's something for the future. But now, we have to reorg it and be what we need to do, but we need to keep in mind when we're reorging it and buying equipment, which we don't have to buy a lot, it's just transferring some equipment. But the equipment there on site to be able to support the dispatching services for the city as well as all the other small towns, which we're already doing for all the other small towns. And I, I don't know how many of you have been in the city dispatch room, but it's not very big. If we have that capability to provide that service.
I think, I think you guys have indicated that without county paying for part of the dispatchers, nine-one-one which is still broke, they were, their budget would be a lot larger and eventually you would have, is that right or not?
Well, if we had to carry the entire.
That's what you guys are. Yes.
Uh, that is true, however, again, it gets back to what can we spend our money for? I mean, we can't, we couldn't support that kinda staff and have them do a lot of things outside of nine-one-one services. But yeah, you're absolutely right, we can survive about five, six years, maybe seven, maybe eight.
And along that same line, if we had, and maybe it won't even work, maybe if you've investigated that, but if you had Paris also contributing, that's gonna be beneficial to nine-one-one, beneficial to the county and to Paris, assuming that something could be worked out.
But see, that's where, like, I think Mr. Crash alluded to, that we can't do this or can't do that, you know? And, and legally, he might be right, I'm not an attorney, that's why we have state attorneys, that's why we have attorneys, right? But yes, they, they can contribute to that, but not for the nine-one-one purposes, but for the purposes di- of dispatching, which would turn, take the whole thing out of nine-one-one's hands. You know, again, we operate under compiled statute that spells out exactly what we can spend our money on. But then when it gets to the dispatching side for the law enforcement of, you know, and answering license plate and people, you know, twenty-eights, twenty-sevens, twenty-nines, with that's law enforcement code. But when it, running those stu- that stuff is that's a whole different thing than what we do as a nine-one-one board. We have to answer a call from a person.
Right.
And we have to send that call and, and.
Right.
To the, to the emergency responders. It doesn't even say that we have to dispatch them, we have to make sure that they're notified that there's emergency in their jurisdiction.
And that's a good point too, I was gonna bring that up, that is not, dispatching is not our responsibility.
Right.
Very simply, that's.
Right, but we're combining it for monetary reasons.
Absolutely, and we're trying to do the best thing and have the best service.
Rather than having a preconceived notion that you don't wanna tackle it right now, doesn't it make sense from a planning standpoint, which you used before, to at least explore it and find out, if nothing else, it would give you the opportunity to plan ahead for it? If, if it's a Johnny come lately in three or four years, you know, jeez, I wish I'd known that four years ago because we would've done different things. But I, I just think it should be at least thrown in the mix so that we can find out, maybe we don't do it right now. But I think it, from a standpoint of an intellectual concept, it should be looked at.
Uh, yeah, we've looked at it and it has been discussed with the city.
Do we have anything written from them? I mean, cause I'll be honest with you, I've heard that before and, and everybody from that standpoint. I don't, I don't have a problem kind of one way or the other, but if somebody says, okay, they don't like it, they don't like it. If we're actually talking to the city or if we're talking to you guys, so somebody's like, well, Troy said he didn't like it. Well, I, I would probably wanna be one of those go back saying, Troy, would you put that in writing for me?
Right.
And that way I have it. It's the same way I think kind of with the city, if we think one of their department heads or whatever says they don't want it and, you know, we talked, I've heard two different people, but I think it's pretty much one, but anyway. But to get something in writing from them that says, you know, at this time, we're not interested. I think that, that goes a long way.
That's exactly what we asked for, Mr. Zuber, last time we visited, that we haven't received yet from the county board was the direction of what you guys wanted to do.
Yeah.
Now, that, that's what we asked for and you're right, I agree with you. Put it in writing and tell me this is what you want us to do and we'll explore that, including the city of Paris or whatever. That kinda gives us the authority at least that we're all on the same page, you know, that we're all in agreement that something needs to be done. Same thing, and we can do that with city of Paris. And I can get one person from the board that's, that says, you know, let's do it. But then there might be two or three others, so I don't know if they gotta vote on it as a board, they gotta go to city, but, but as far as the.
Wouldn't get that far along, they'd have to vote on it.
Right, but as the chairman of the nine-one-one board, I just, you know, I just wanna concentrate on our Illinois compiled statutes of what the responsibilities of the nine-one-one department is, of, you know, of what our responsibilities are, and that's it at this point. Again, believe me, there's been discussions. There's been pros, there's been cons, there's been let's do it. We have people on our board that are a big part of, say, I'm Brian Gates, a fire chief's on our board. Of all people that use nine-one-one, that knows what's going on with the city, Mr. Gates knows probably more than anybody else on the board. You know, so, I mean, we, we do have those discussions of planning forward, like, like Mr. Voit's saying. We have that going, going forward. But right now, we just wanna look at the service and the cost to the users of the nine-one-one under the nine-one-one statute. Now, like I said, we're not opposed to that city thing coming later, we're not opposed to, but we're not.
We can't even get this done, let alone bringing a whole nother group in. And it's like night and day different in what they do versus what we do. I mean, it's.
You have to talk about their dispatching.
Yeah, I mean, they, they have their own thing that they do there. So to, you know, get this done first, that, and like Jeff said, three or four years, that was what we talked about. Let's get, take the baby steps first, get this done, then move on with that.
And then we have to master this.
To do it all at the same time is nearly gonna be impossible to ever get it accomplished. You've just got too many different things. I mean, we found it out, Carl, years ago, we tried to do it and it just, you know, it's, I, that's why we decided to try this first. Get this done, take, I mean, working and then move in that direction. Because there's nothing that we'll do now that we would do different if they came in. Cause like he said, we're not buying new equipment, we don't have to.
The equipment's still there.
But one thing I could see that could help the situation, if you got the city involved, you know, in splitting the costs, that can make it more workable for everybody, if you had the city involved. I mean, I, I know what you're saying, I, I understand. But listening to the board members talking, they feel like we at least need to explore the possibility of the city being involved in this.
But you're doubling the work too.
I know, but at least take a look at it.
That's all I'm asking, it may not be we.
Okay, well, who takes the lead on this? Who takes the lead? We tried this once and we were definitely shot down.
That's true, that's true, the, the group that is absolutely against it and.
You're saying.
City in the city?
No, no, no.
When, when we tried to do this joint dispatch a year or two years ago, there was a full court press against people involved in that, trying to run their busi- hurt their business and.
Wasn't it the genesis more than the actual function that we were trying to do? I mean, it wasn't openly talked about, is, that I understand.
How we didn't even get our committee made before it got shot down. How could you talk about anything? And that's the thing is regardless, as a county though, and the nine-one-one, we have to be able to support the nine-one-one operations. We don't care about police dispatching, we really don't. We have to support the emergency nine-one-one system and that's what we're looking at. But like you said, you look at revenue and all that. Absolutely, it would be helpful to have a quarter million from Paris coming in and a, and quarter million from the county and we have ten dispatchers, absolutely. But if they say, go screw yourself, we're back to where we have to support the nine-one-one regardless.
Yeah, we understand that.
And back to your point.
But we're all together, staying together on this.
Right.
I don't see that we're gonna run into the same problem that we ran into two years ago.
But like you said, back to the point, who's gonna head it and who's gonna be responsible for it?
We, we tried to head it up and get Elton at our meeting just like this one and before we walked out the door.
It was, it was scared of another shot.
Okay, all right.
Well, that's fine, but who's gonna take the lead?
In the county?
Yeah.
I say it's county.
Yeah, and, and you appoint a com- a committee from everybody and, or, I'm just throwing that out. From the city and nine-one-one and the county and they get together and start meeting immediately and.
And come up with a.
What can work and what can't work and I maybe just.
We can explore that and I think that'll take another study session, but I think the, the nine-one-one board needs to talk about it. But I think that we could come back and then you could, you know.
You're talking about today, right, your meeting?
Right, today's our meeting, it's afternoon. I don't wanna just go and say, no, we're gonna appoint such and such, 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 this committee. Say, what are you talking about? City, the city finds out and then they're like, well, what are you guys talking about? I think that we need to, to address it with our board and we'll come back to any study sessions that you guys would like for us to do. And we could come up with a plan to have a committee. However, going forward though, I just want to make sure that we're, we're all on the same page. Our responsibility as county, first of all, as county board and county nine-one-one is the emergency telephone system board, not dispatching, police cars, right?
That's a second.
And that's what my concern is, is, is making sure people get the response that they need from our fire and ambulance and, and as well as our whole boards. But we will consider, you know, we'll talk about it, but we're still looking at this lease. We're looking at reorging it and we're looking at saving everybody money and, and improving the service, it's a no-brainer.
We understand the primary duty of nine-one-one is dispatch and making sure that folks are getting the proper response that they're supposed to get in emergencies.
Well, that's the point I was gonna try and make earlier, dispatch again, uh, if you, to consolidate the statute, our requirement is to make sure the telephone system in place, when people dial that number, that someone answers the call and that person has the ability to contact whatever emergency, not to dispatch, but to contact that. And, yeah, and, and again, back to the city, I mean, they made a choice, I'm not, this was just their own choice, which is fine, but they do that by intercom, which I think is kinda silly, but that's, that's their choice. If, if Chrisman decided they wanted a dispatcher or someone to write, and this is really ridiculous, a handwritten note after Chrisman to notify somebody, that, that, that's where, that's the way it gets done. It's up to them to decide how they want to dispatch.
How you and we just, they, like, if they wanted to tell them to sound that fire whistle like we have on top of the firehouse, then that's how we would dispatch our firefighters, really? I mean, that is something that could happen and we still do that, but we do it ourselves, but that is our responsibility.
Let me get, let me get something clear here, I'm, I heard this earlier and if three people get mad right now in, that are dispatching at nine-one-one and leave, the sheriff hires them?
Yes.
Does, and he doesn't include you in the process or you or you?
No, sir.
And you have to pay for it. We have an agreement that sets all that forward.
It's in that lease agreement.
It's a small concept of the county board. You're responsible for paying all the money, but you don't have any control.
There you go.
That's why, that's why I brought it up.
I just wanna get this.
I gotta, I gotta be all figured out.
That's exactly right.
There's no question about that.
And it's not working.
Well, that's what I'm trying, if, if that's something we need to address and need to, we can get that addressed pretty quick.
And that's not a current flaw, that is a flaw in the system, I mean, back when our last.
Did you hire the dispatchers or did, or did?
With consultation.
Was I there?
She was involved in interviews, yes, she was.
And that's how it should be.
And when you had a problem with a dispatcher, did you go right to the dispatcher or did you go to Nanette and say, hey, so-and-so was nippy, you snippy with somebody, you're hung up today?
We worked together with it.
Okay.
And towards the end of my term, she was, had more involvement in it, in supervising them. And a lot of times they went to her, you know, it, it worked fine.
Yeah, okay.
It doesn't work currently.
Right, I, that's, I, I wasn't aware though that you didn't have any input, that you guys as a board, you're, you're writing the checks, you're paying for the training. You have, you could, it could be the, a, a sixth grader with, that could read a third grade level and somebody says that's who's hired, then you just gotta make the best of it.
Not really, they have to.
What?
They have to be, they have to be trained and have to pass that training, right? They can't.
Just the EMD training.
Just, yeah.
Just what?
EM, emergency medical dispatch training, that's the only training they get.
Green house.
Training.
But regardless, we, we will take that to the meeting and we'll, we'll investigate that, but like I said, you know, I hope you all understand. We have to make it as smooth and we, we cannot fall on our face. You know, I like to take, like you said, baby steps. I don't wanna take, get off running and fall and stumble and then service goes to crap and then everybody makes fun of us because we tried to do something that was good and it failed, right? We want, we gotta make sure we do it the right way when it come into people's lives, that's the most important thing. But yes, it would be great if the city would just.
Because the way we're, we're suggesting are really minor changes. I mean, operational, there's, other than moving to that room, there's nothing that would really change.
And that carries us on for multiple sheriffs and relationships if we do it this way, that we don't have nothing to worry about with relationships of, of that. But I appreciate you guys' time, I really do. And if there's any more questions, I mean, Merle, did I forget anything or Nanette? I mean, we're just here to answer, but please feel free to contact me or Nanette or Merle if any of you don't have my, my contact information, but we'll see you today, I hope, all right? So, we'll discuss it going forward and then we'll be back at study session, but we'll pre-arrange that with somebody, if that's all right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You guys wanna take off?
I have.
It's got warm in here. We just.
Yeah.
We're leaving a floor.
Did you get that lease back, copy that lease?
Yeah, did you want?
I know.
No, I just.
I knew it was sitting right there.
Do you need some more?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Burn it on that?
Do you have any other things to do?
Come here, Carl, please.
Just on the airport. I think everybody was at the meeting except Mike, I assume you know the.
Mike.
The.
I got a job for him later.
Yeah, well, okay.
I haven't had, you know, since the meeting, I don't know whether anybody's been in contact with Mills, you know, I think not that.
Augie has.
Augie has.
Yeah, I think.
Well, Augie's looking at the air conditioner going straight.
Yeah.
Sure.
Let me know. Uh. Let me do it on the.
Hangers flare. Office flare, closet flare.
Everything's ready. And we're working on getting the advisory committee, you know, we're kind of, that's a pro- somewhat of a priority to get something going on the advisory committee.
How, what did you guys decide when you were talking about that, since I wasn't there, about how many board, county board members are gonna be on that committee? Did, did you decide amongst yourselves, do you need three or did you just want one or what, what did you, did you assess that?
Three didn't work. Yeah, we, we talked about three and I possibly adding four to s- what was the, three to, three to nine?
It's three to nine right now.
Our suggestion was three to nine board mem- or advisory board members. And we initially talked about the three county board members of the airport committee being on it and, but eventually phasing them out, the possibility of, or at least leaving one of them on it.
Right.
But initially leaving all three members on it, possibly phasing out two of them.
As we get more interested folks to be groomed for it.
Put time, put time in your recommendation.
But, but Carl, but Carl has assured me, so the rest of you know that, and you've all agreed to this, I think, so let's, let's just make sure it's all public record here, that you're gonna try to make this as diverse a board as possible. Not a hundred percent guys that were on before or ladies and gentlemen were on before. And, and I think we should try to get people that, not just some Joe Schmo out there that says airport, Edgar County Airport, maybe I wanna be on that committee. I think it should be prefaced by someone who has knowledge of how airport, you know, airports operate or, or has an airplane or, and I think probably all agree on that, that it needs to be, they need to be able to contribute something other than just general business practice.
My premise, Mike, is what you're saying, but as I've said before, I think we all, if, if that airport's really gonna be utilized by business and industry, if that's the real premise of that, then I think you need somebody on there from the business industry. If we want that to be utilized out there, I'm not sure that person or that company, well, yeah, I'm not sure that person that.
Make somebody competitive.
About, about airport, we need those people there too, but I think we also need somebody on there saying, you know what, we're planning on flying three people a week in there or one person a month.
And we're having a problem with what you're doing. And we're having a problem with what you're doing.
Yeah, or, here's what we need to kinda help us, so, I mean, if, if there's a way to do that, I don't know.
We need to plan for growth in business and industry.
I know, if that's what we're trying to do with it, I, I don't know, but.
Cause I keep hearing that thrown out by everybody that's involved, it's that, well, we won't have any factories or anybody come here without, that's a prerequisite, we gotta have an airport. But, you know, you know, if you stand out there with your field glasses and scan the skies, you don't see that many Gates products and Lear jets and and big heavy twins slopping down on it, you're okay. But, you know what, we could probably take taxpayers' money and rent a bus back and forth from home, cheaper than we can maintain an airport, if that's the case. I mean, that's an exaggeration, but I'm, I'm just saying that, that I, I wanna make sure that the tax dollars that we spend on the airport are, are being utilized for airport purposes and for the good of the community in whole. And there's people out there that don't have an airplane, that don't have relatives flying in there. They're probably gonna gripe because, just like people don't have kids at school. They're getting zonked with a huge amount of paying for the school and they're not even using it. So, I mean.
You guys all use those at one time or another, alright?
Well, I'm sure you'll have an opinion on that.
And there's an indirect benefit from schools.
Oh, yeah.
To the account.
Only about five thousand pounds of research.
Right. Well, I'd like you to compile that and have that on my desk.
I'll send that to you.
Would you, would you email that to you?
Yeah.
Anything else, Carl?
No, but I agree with you, Mr. Zuber, that it would, you know, have someone involved, 'cause that is a big part of, you know, out there. For the benefit of the airport.
Well, just so it's not the same old thing.
Yeah.
And I'm afraid, I, I'm afraid that, I wanna see as many diversity on there, because when you do that, you eliminate a lot of the gripe. If you understand what I'm saying.
Well, you're also pulling from a lot of different people.
Exactly.
Carl, I think it's fair to say that if you guys run in to please let us know and we'll contact them and.
But, you know, and I still would like some input from some of the past members.
Well, sure.
Cause, you know, they've been involved in it and look at what we've got out there, you know, they, they've done some good things out there.
Exactly, they're, they're the foundation of it. You, you can't, you, there's no doubt that they've got a personal interest in it, cause they use it. And it benefits them, but by golly, they're the ones that started this.
But, but the diversity, I think, is important to get some new ideas and some new, but, some younger, some young people involved in it. I know, you know, it's hard for young people to be involved and own planes and stuff, but still, you know, if you've got someone with some interest in it, you know.
Well, maybe there's a kid here that's in flight school or something, you know, that's, that's, doesn't have an airplane, but doesn't mean he's not interested in aviation.
I think maybe another consideration would be the geographical location of the people. More specific, everybody doesn't have to be from Paris.
Correct.
Scott one, okay? No, I mean anybody, Scott over here.
Yeah, Melon's fine.
How about some old retired geezer that lives over in Grandview, how would that be? He could be on there. Cause they understand, in particular, one that's had a lot of experiences on boards.
I'll come smack him if you.
I, I'd even probably have a little brother to probably drive him over there, how about, it's dark.
How about he just ask us to?
That's all on the airport.
Okay, Mike?
Oh, I'm not in the mood to pick a fight, so no, I don't have any things.
I am.
Let's, let's go ahead, big boy, you go ahead, you just.
The chairman of the building and grounds committee meeting would like to recommend that Mike hopefully take care of our current snake problem 'cause he has a gun and I don't. We have snakes in the courthouse yard.
I'd say that's a problem for the chair, that's a good deal.
Probably eating the mice.
Snakes in the courthouse yard?
Nothing wrong with that.
Are you talking about the ones that slither or stand on two legs? Oh, not wearing short skirts and bad makeup, that's kinda snakey.
Put up with that, baby.
And I didn't say it, Charlie.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Yeah, well.
As long as it's not poisonous, don't bother.
I've got some along what he's talking about on the building committee.
Yes, sir.
Bev, at supervisor assessor's office, I was over there and she wasn't there, but I talked to the girls. And they're wanting to do some painting in there.
I'll return.
And they volunteered to do the painting. I told, passed on that maybe Wednesday after the meeting, the building committee could come over there and take a look at what their, their ideas and see what.
I'd be glad to.
What, what we need to do. And also, uh, the janitor at the courthouse told me Friday that this last heavy rain, that the slate roof on the courthouse is, he's got fifteen buckets sitting up there in the attic collecting water. And he can see some daylight up through there. So, after the meeting, the building committee needs to go take a look at that with him and see what, how serious the problem is and see what needs to be done to address it.
The Crickman Building, the west window is broken in the conference room.
That big window?
Yeah, at the bottom. I don't know whether there's a two-section, you know what I mean? But at the bottom, somehow it is cracked, so we need to address that issue also.
Three-quarter inch plot.
Yep.
Our, our unit is, is at the time that's economical and also, uh, before they put a decorative piece in there instead of a window. I can say they, they go into a lot of those type of, you know, when they're redoing the windows now, some are going to be. But the ladies over there at, at assessors and they talked to me about that also. And now, whatever they told me is that they're really more than willing to do the painting. And first of all, they're gonna provide the paint, I quite honestly said, you know what, if you're willing to do the painting, from my standpoint, I, I almost like to do. I think that's a county expense to buy that paint by sale.
And there were some carpet issues.
Yeah, there are, that's.
They talked to me and I told them to.
That's what I, yeah, I gave you guys some.
Who decides, who decides what color?
And they solved the problem.
Well, you can see what it looks like after, after it's painted, but you look.
I don't know what word, got lost in communications. But they apparently, it was them, was one of the girls stopped me in courthouse and thanked me for getting that.
It's just so dark over there.
Mr. Handler took my comments about the accident, I put the Stidle Road in the paper and the first thing I said, and I was glad to put it in there, was I didn't have all the facts. I've got more facts now. There was one person in that man, that was there with Carl. And everybody's okay, but it was a bigger deal than I thought it was at the time. Still might have been a too big of a response, but I'd rather have too big a response than in my case, practically no response. I appreciate you putting that in there that way.
Well, while, while we're on that subject.
Yes.
I had a little time to think about, and I wanna throw in my DC and some. I think. Be still, I've got the floor.
He has the floor.
He had nothing to say.
If, if we, I think we have to be very careful. I, I guarantee you, I have constituents that'll scream bloody murder if they think we're trying to put speed limits on the county highways. And although we're, we're responsible for implementing the safety and security and some other individual who's elected is responsible for executing safety and security, but we, we have to kinda be the ones by law, I guess, that decide. I'm, I'm all for, I mean, Eric can get a study, but go, I don't wanna do anything different than what the state's doing right now. Cause I don't wanna have to hear about speeding tickets and all that kind of stuff.
Well, those people are probably worried about that, are going faster than fifty-five anyway and they're, they're already guilty.
They're ignoring the signs on the shutters.
Right, right.
Did you have anything else, Phil?
Well, that one.
Thank you for your work.
Dale was with you for a while, but he's not anymore, I could tell by.
I got distracted, hopefully my mail.
Yeah, you're Jehovah Witness, ma'am.
You should read it.
Dan?
I did, I already did.
We had an hour meeting at twelve o'clock. Hopefully, Mr. Kraft will not be sitting in Main Street watching the ambulance helper pick up, go by at twelve o'clock. And then go out and say, we didn't show up and should have let him out. No comment after that. I'm still a little peeved about it, as you probably know. He wasn't gonna be there anyway. Sorry. I don't forget things.
So now you kinda know what it's like having them on your bad side, don't you?
Hey, that doesn't bother me, damn it.
We need to have a finance slash sheriff's committee meeting. The eighteenth, nineteenth, or twentieth are available. That's a Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday of next week. That committee would include Dan, Alan, Carl, and myself for a combined meeting. And the sheriff is available all three of those days. And the purpose of the meeting would be to discuss retirement issues and/or any pending litigation.
I'm available on the twentieth, that's the only day I'm available.
Friday.
Friday.
You know, if I'm the only one to worry about.
You want to designate me if you're standing.
Well, no, I think we can.
That's better when I say I can't.
You cannot, you cannot do it on a Monday. So, we've got, one member can't make it on Friday and one member, that's the only day they can make it, so. As usual, we gotta decide. We need to get that underway and going, and the state's attorney will also be available for those, that, any of those three days.
Jeff, I'm gonna say, like, if you can get, yeah, the five, like, I don't want me to be the only one, no.
Well, there's, that would be three.
Whatever, you get everybody, that's.
Carl? He's looking long-range forecasts.
Yeah, I could, I could toss it, but it'd be on, be later Thursday.
Well, we can do it.
I mean, almost, if I get.
Yeah, I, I don't care when it is, I mean, it's.
That's why I say, but don't.
Yeah, you can do it in the evenings, any of them. Tuesday's the only evening you could do it. Well, we can, how about the seventeenth, I, I guess we could do it the seven, seventeenth doesn't work for you either?
No, I'm going that way with the other stuff.
Well, we can get everybody, you know, we can just, do it one hour, it can be the other.
I was gonna say do it. I need to do it that week, I mean, I don't have any problem, I'm being there, cause you wanna, wanna get some stuff squared away.
Yep.
Can we decide for sure Wednesday?
Yeah, yeah, we can decide Wednesday. Yeah, I give you a cha- I wasn't, we weren't gonna necessarily, I was just gonna say, Carl, I'll check with you in a day or two, we'll just, everybody.
So, it sounds like it's either Thursday or Friday.
Right.
Nineteenth or twentieth.
Anything else?
And everybody, anybody else that wants, obviously it'll be, we'll let everybody.
If you have on Friday at one, I can make.
Budget-wise, budget-wise, uh, did some work on it, we're scheduled to spend about three point four five, and we're still on schedule to take in three point six. And that does include anything that we have to pay out for extraordinary things, if you know what I mean. Okay? So, we're still right where we need to be at this point, okay? That's all I have.
Al? Nothing at this time, Mr. President. Augie's, I'm gonna say that, Augie's office and, uh, he's been working.
I got a question.
Communication back and forth with them, so I appreciate that.
Email that you sent us, which I didn't take.
On the last. On nine one one?
On nine one, what, in essence, and maybe you guys, I couldn't read it on my, on my, on my small phone. Couldn't read the small print. In, in essence, and I'll bring it up on the big, but in essence, is that saying that state police are trying to get their fingers into nine?
What I do is I try to pass all this stuff from the United Counties Council. Anytime they have a, a law thing that goes up, or they have a judgment, it talks about it, I send it out. These guys, somebody else can talk a lot more about nine one one than I can. I read it, quite honestly, I'm not.
Okay.
I'm not sure what, what all that means, but I just knew that, obviously, we're all interested in nine one one, so I read it and I try to pass that along.
That was a compromise, yes, to answer your question, yes, the, the state government is trying to take over.
That's what I'm, what I'm thinking, they're trying to do, what I'm hearing, rumors that, that from now, when, if, if, if a, if a dog gets ran over here in front of the Edgar County Highway Office, if somebody calls nine one one, they'll most likely hook to a dispatcher in Springfield who will in deep turn dispatch or call the sheriff's department, say a dog got around.
I'm not sure it's quite that.
Well, that's what I'm worried is heading for.
Well.
If it's a nine one one call.
But the other side about that, I thought you talked about different rates and possibility, different rates of non, non-home phones anymore and what.
There is an increase there, cause right now, there's, I forget what it is, but they net out a lot less than that.
Pointed some kind of an administrator that's in one of the divisions of the state police, what that thing was about.
And there's a committee set up by the minority and minority leaders and all that.
You guys probably aren't aware of this.
Two items. They got, uh, a metal plant that's closing and a hundred people losing their lives. Committee for the workforce, the people. Are you on top of that?
No, I'm not on top of that.
On workforce, for me, that's me, that's workforce twenty-three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you on top of that, trying to get them people?
Supposedly, now, I'm talking to the crew at, at Petco or whatever. That's still kind of like, oh, the, you know, laundry type thing as far as when that is shutting, not shutting, yes it is shutting, how many people are gonna be leaving, how many people are not gonna be leaving? How many people are gonna try to get other jobs in here?
No, it's closed August first. August first, I got a letter from.
I understand that, but I mean, until everything shakes out, is my understanding is, what, how many people here are really gonna be involved or not involved? Are people going, are they not going, are they trying to get other jobs within that?
That's all the people, what I, what I was getting at.
Well, this, uh, came to Ben and I just threw it in the file, thinking we might be talking about it.
That's great, cause I can send this down to F and G.
Right, well, I, yeah, we need to try and get some.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was hoping.
This is everybody, nobody knows who's gonna go with them or not.
Oh, the bills are shelled.
Yeah, I get a copy of that.
Yeah.
I'll better send it to you, get it away.
John, did not John tell us at a special meeting?
Or we're gonna get a committee and cover the parish, or we're gonna, how are you gonna do that? We've kind of volunteered to make a copy of that.
Carl, let's see what they have to say this evening.
Yeah, cause they may say, no, we're not, we don't wanna do that.
Yeah, but we still wanna do it.
Do it, right. Right, but I'll find out.
And then we can deal with that on Wednesday?
Yes.
Is that alright, Ben? Is that a plan, or are you kicking the can down the road? I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, if that's what you wanna do, I'm just thinking that we, we have been.
I kinda get the feeling they don't want.
I do, I have that feeling.
So, we'll, we'll see, you know, after they talk tonight, we'll see what they have to say and then.
They're not telling us the real reason, so we need to figure that out.
What real reason?
Why they don't want the city involved.
Gentlemen, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll see you on Wednesday, thank you all.
Why do I want them involved? What I tried to point out, without county assistance. I could do a nine one ones. They got money now, the reason they got money. Yeah, but the reason they got that is cause we pay for the inspector, unlike what they're saying, we pay for, the one sheriff's department pays you yardage. They pay for one seat.
See if that works.
And I won't know that for them.
I know.
That's a long wait for your waiting hangout.
I'm saying it's a big burden on the county, what we're paying now, to keep them affluent. If we can get Paris involved and we've got thirds instead of our, our some of us, our some thing, whatever they end up agreeing to, it seems to me like it's just logical. Maybe there's and we have to get past the individuals wanting power, we have to get, we look, have to look out after the taxpayers.
Well, one of the big things, I remember years ago, when Carl was sheriff, not two years ago, but years ago. The, the dispatchers at the city put out such a squall. And I mean, they got such a tremendous amount of report, cause they thought they were gonna lose their job. That was one time, just a small group of people really put up a. That was one issue. Just a small group of people really could have, and nobody wanted to fight it.
Right.
And some of them probably.
I think we need to investigate it, and if we find out it's not possible, then it's not possible, but we can't show where this happened in the past. Well, I know what's happening in the past.
Black.
Individuals.
Yes.
Hey, would you buy that? Well, I agree, but when, when I first got involved in ambulance, the ambulance couldn't talk to the city police, couldn't answer the county. I'm like, why isn't everybody on the same system? Never got a good answer to that. Oh, they got their own radios. Oh, that's nice. Be nice if you could talk to them. I think we're closer. Well, I know, I'm saying this is going back fifteen years. Right. It was a mess.
One of the things that, that I understand is the police chief is, is set against it.
Well, I've heard that from many people.
I don't understand.
But that's the case. I'd like for him to, them to say it.
Right.
You're not putting it right.
But I don't care if they're saying it. And they, they may have the best reason in the whole world, but hey, if the city of Paris could come out and say, no, we're not interested at this time.
Okay, you made a good point. Paper that says why we haven't done it, because we should look at it and when they're in there. And I think all of us sitting here right now don't see a reason why we can't do it. And if, if we get shown reasons, that's fine.
Well, I don't, yeah, that's why, and I don't even know, even if the reason is somebody, they don't want to do it.
Right.
That's their, that's their choice, I think. Or right now, I think, I think their choice.
Anything else?
Nope.
County clerk?
Um, you do not yet have bills in your packet, because they're not done yet. Uh, we spent the majority of last week finalizing, uh, tax extensions. And we've been very busy in, in that office. And we do, when we're done with what we do, we do what's called a file shift. And Friday, we filed shifted over back to Don's office. And so, we're done with it, but that, you know, that, uh, took Kerry away from finishing up the bills. So, as soon as I get them today, I'll email them out to you, and I'll have a copy for Carl. I'll have hard copy for you Wednesday, but that's why you don't have to wind your packet tomorrow. Uh, the only other thing that really looks, uh, well, I don't say it looks different, but, um, we're gonna adopt the prevailing wage. That resolution's in your packet. We gotta do that every year. Um, I don't have any questions.
I had, I had one. What, what is appoint Carl and Dale to the County Farmland Assessment Review Committee?
Yeah, that's a good question. Ben, why don't you answer that?
I was reading this. Go ahead.
Appoint Carl and Dale to the farmland assessment review.
Because we're farmers. Yeah, that's a, a committee that, uh, the way I understand it, barely gets that committee together once, well, it's been once a year. Should be twice a year. And she says, the reason that they've changed the land, the way they assess farmland, and this committee can say, we don't like that, or we like it, but that's all it amounts to.
So, how many other people are on that?
Uh, Dan Whines is only, Dan Whines and the, and the.
Trobden?
No, but, I'm gonna be off there. It's, uh.
Farrow and Hugh?
No, not the, no, no.
Okay, has nothing to do with.
Yes, she, yes, there is one. I can, yeah. Ray Young, Ray Young was on that committee. It's not a political committee, but Ray Young is on, is on it, and there'll be Carl, Dale, and Dan Whines.
And so they just look at.
That's what she explained, if that's all.
Think we need to have different people in farmlands on that.
Well, actually, and Lord, you.
Oh, you've been.
And you may be right, but that's what she suggested that.
You've done it.
But two, but two people from the board have been off to the L A now.
No?
Oh.
We're the most qualified. Are you, Rick? Are you the one? Are you bothering Mr. Peter?
Hmm? What's that?
I already asked that question.
Okay, good. That, I don't care.
That was my first question. Is that a comment?
I've got a question on number twelve. It says authorized letting of bids of the new phone system.
I'll, I'll let, uh, Mr. Boyd address that.
He's gone today.
Oh.
There, we're looking into it. Ross has spent some time putting together bid specs for our phone system.
Has to be bid out.
And it has to be bid out.
If you do it.
If you do it, and so there's nothing, I'm not aware that we are going to get a new phone system. But if, if we listen to the guy that spoke, what, two weeks ago, that there's some kind of a rebate or a special promo to upgrade our system, then that, I think that caused the, you know, the thought process, well, let's go ahead and bid it out and see.
Who's thought process?
No, I think, yeah, if, if it was gonna do anything, it had to be bid, for sure, if it was over thirty thousand.
You know, I realize that, but there hasn't been any, has there been a committee that's discussed it and said, we want to put this out for bids?
You'll have to ask Jeff that.
I'd say no. There hasn't been anybody that's.
Okay.
Discussed it, a committee.
You don't talk to Jeff before.
Well, right, but.
Well, that, that's something we also discuss on Wednesday too. You know, whether or not we want to do it. That's just, whether or not it's gonna happen.
Well, I think a committee should have discussed it and, you know, looked at these phone bids and seen, you know, versus just, it's on our agenda.
You approve it.
Very, well, I'm, I'm telling you, there has been no committee that's done it. And I would say table it until a committee looks at it and sees if we want to, if they want to recommend that we put it out for bids.
It's already in the paper. Did I read that wrong? Is there something in the paper already about letting of bids for this thing?
You know.
Yes, I think there was.
I missed that, and they were supposed to proof that ad to me.
And then send it, see if it's all right.
And then, so now, there's been a.
Blame Gary?
No, I'm not gonna blame Gary, but that's.
I thought.
But I was.
That were taken out for bids?
Your show was broad today.
That's what I thought.
They should not have run that ad. They were, all my ads, they have to show me a proof, so I can make sure it's set up right, and then, but they didn't do that.
Okay. See, that's what made me think that maybe even it didn't have to be bid out, because it was technology or something. Or some technology issues, and they were just doing it.
Anyway, okay, we can discuss something.
Yeah.
Well, there might be advantages, but.
I'm not saying, I'm just saying there's, it's not hard.
But other than, other than the guy coming two weeks ago, there's been no formal committee that's met and discussed it. It just got, it was asked to be brought on the agenda.
Do we need a closed session? Is there anything else to come before this meeting?
Do we need a closed session?
Well, yes. Yes, we do.
I would entertain that motion if you.
For what?
It's gotta be quick, but they gotta get to their noon meeting.
Yeah.
Closed session to discuss appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body pending litigation and setting a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body.
Did you get a second for that anywhere?
Second.
All those in favor?
I gotta call Andrew and tell him we're gonna be a little late.
Well, you make it quick.
Yes.
You'll be out here, but.
All those in favor, closed session.
Aye.
Opposed?